Would you please stand as we honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve or amend the agenda? To approve the agenda? Dennis, a second. Karen, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments. We would ask that if there are any people who wish to speak, we would like to hear from you. We would invite you to the microphone. Please state your name and your address. If you have a question about a personnel issue, we would ask that you not use anybody's names. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board at this time? If not, the next item on the agenda is student representative reports. And I believe we have two student representatives tonight. We have Megan Roberts. Megan is involved in track. She's a class officer. She's a member of the math team. She was in the musical, and she's also involved in Girl Scouts. And with Megan is Chloe Simpson. She's involved in track. She's a class officer. And she's a race car driver at Spencer Speedway. Ladies, welcome.
Thank you for letting us speak today. So, at the school, everyone is so excited for, like, summer to get started. And all, like, the sports teams are practicing outside now, and that's exciting for all the students.
Along with the sports teams, the lacrosse team, the boys lacrosse team beat Pal Mac recently last week. And the track team also won yesterday's meet. And both baseball and softball are holding their own on the field.
In addition to that, the juniors are getting excited for their prom, which is May 9th.
On the other side, everybody is now beginning to study for finals. Regents exams are coming soon, and finals are being made up by teachers. That's exciting.
And as you may know, today is Earth Day. So, one of our earth science teachers for the freshman and sophomore class is Mrs. Morgan. And today, she assembled a group of students that spent time cleaning up outside on campus, and they planted a tree.
And along with the science classes, some of our freshmen and sophomore classmates are excited to see the earth science in action or the product of earth science when they visit the chimney bluffs this Friday. And that is all we have for you today. Thank you for letting us speak today.
Thank you for your report and for attending tonight's meeting. Next on our agenda is board member comments or reports. Do we have any board member comments or reports at this time?
I just want to make it known, two weeks ago at the last board meeting, I left. I was ill. I did not sign the resolution. And I'm going to ask Kathy to send something out to the entire staff. Because as I have been in and around town, I was at the Lincoln Barbecue. I have been asked by several staff members, "Why didn't you sign it?" I thought for sure you would be the one to sign it. I just want to make it perfectly clear. It was sent to me. I signed it. I sent it back. It did go to the state with all nine board member signatures. But obviously, there's a link of faculty and staff that may not be aware that I did sign it. There was nothing against it. And I just wanted to make that and make it on the record. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? If not, let's go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Superintendent reports, we're going to be, we're going to bring you three course offerings. But before we do that, we're going to, I just want to do some staff, student staff recognition. Wayne Central School District, select chorus students sang at NISMAs Solo Festival in Canada. Well, this was great news. Four students received 100s. A total of 10 students scored 98 and above, and all 10 will be recommended for all state this year. And I believe that's a record for us. All-state 100s, Lydia Champagne, Abby DeWitt, Bethany Edwards, Alisa Oki. Those receiving 99s were Jordan Kohan, Jay Abrams, and Maria Pinto. Those receiving 98s were Josh Dunn, Angie Champagne, and Richard Henselman. So congratulations to those students, and we look forward to them in their all-state this year. Also, Ontario Elementary OE Math-athon participants raised $4,891.10 for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital this year. I've said this before, I'm amazed at the community service support that our district and our students and our staff are involved in. It is really heartwarming, and it's just tremendous. Their sponsorship money will go a long way in providing the children of St. Jude's with medicine and equipment they need to fight their illnesses. So congratulations to OE students and staff for that. At this time, Mr. Mike Poehl is already at the table. I'm going to ask him to introduce some of his guests as he talks to us a little bit about new course offerings that will be on the catalog for next year. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Laura Farber and Wendy Riley to join me at the table as we present the new art class. Wendy's our art chair, and Laura is an art teacher. So we're excited the opportunity presents itself tonight to share with you three course proposals that we're hoping that you'll approve for our students to take advantage of next year. As we started in the fall, we talked about the course offerings, college and career readiness piece. One of the things that I hope you'll find evident tonight is that each of these component courses all have that career and college-ready piece within them. And there's also one that Laura is going to present tonight, the fashion design and illustration course that also offers a life skill. I've seen many students that lack the basic common skills, and sewing, I think, is one of them. I know firsthand, I've ripped my pants more than once and have had to go down and grab some needles and try to stitch it together. But I think that this is also an inviting class to give our students with artistic abilities more than just a traditional crafts course, clay or illustration and drawing. So we're excited to start off with this class tonight. May need some help with the technical side. Oh, there you go. See, I knew I needed help with that PowerPoint again.
Stay close, Amy. Okay, good evening. My name's Laura Farber, and I have been a teacher at Wayne Central since January of 2000. My first full year at Wayne Central, I taught a Point II Home and Careers. In addition to teaching Point VIII Art, I started at the middle school, and now I'm here at the high school. We've been dreaming about offering this class to our students for several years, me for probably as long as I've been a teacher. And I'm really excited to talk to you tonight. Okay, this course is designed to meet the needs of a student who is interested in exploring a career in fashion design, merchandising, or illustration. Many of our students design clothes in their spare time, and this course will teach them to translate their designs into wearable garments. The course will give students who are interested in learning to use a sewing machine a chance to experiment with construction techniques, which they can use to create clothing, home decor items, and artwork for the rest of their lives. So why fashion design? We surveyed the art students about possible electives almost two years ago, and fashion design was the clear winner. They also indicated an interest in interior design and advertising, which shows us that our students are thinking about their futures even as early as the sixth grade. We frequently have students express an interest in fashion design as a career option. But we currently do not offer a course in which they can experience some of the tasks that career and fashion might entail. Our hope is to offer students a taste of what they might experience in a collegiate-level fashion design class so that they can make an informed decision about career paths. So my background, that's me in the yellow. I grew up in a family that sewed. There'd be piles of fabric on the kitchen table when I went to bed, and I'd get up in the morning, and there were dresses hanging in the doorway. I was sure it was magic, and I wanted in. So when I turned nine, that was the age that was deemed appropriate in my house to learn how to sew. I got to touch the metal case singer, and that was it. My mom was a genius at making something from nothing, a dress from a pair of men's pajamas, couch covers from garage sale curtains, and we always had the best Halloween costumes. That would be the Senior Ball 1994, a thrift store dress that we hacked up and repurposed. Throughout high school, I was always drawing, designing, and creating. I even made senior ball dresses for myself and several of my friends. I went off to college as a fashion design major, but the business side of the fashion industry just wasn't appealing to me. I just wanted to make stuff. So I changed my major to art and then found teaching a couple of years later. And again, I taught Home and Careers my first year at Wayne. I had 26 7th graders on sewing machines, which is a great experience to have your first year as a teacher. You learn a lot very, very quickly. More recently, I've been creating costumes for Gliding Stars, which is an adaptive ice skating program for my own children, and occasionally making a dress for a special occasion like a board presentation. As you can see, I have the experience and the passion one would need in order to make this course a success. So the structure of the actual course. The course would be a half-year elective open to 10th through 12th graders. We hope to enroll 16 to 20. Last time I checked, we had 12 already signed up and a couple that were waiting to see how their Regents exams go this year before they commit, and that's all pending on the course being approved, of course. So some of the things we'd be covering: history of fashion, fashion illustration, properties of fabrics, garment construction techniques, some basic sewing machine knowledge, pattern making and sewing from that pattern. They may change slightly depending on the interest and experience level of the students enrolled. I really need to see kind of where they are and where we need to best spend our time. Cost to run the course. We're going to initially include it in the traditional rotation, so we don't need to add any additional staff at this time. We have probably four electives that we rotate over a two-year period so that we can offer enough electives for the kids who want the five-unit sequence. The total cost to run the class, we're estimating just under $3,000. I went through the basement at the middle school and found some machines from the old home ec program. And on spring break, I sat down there and tested them all out. We have five that are functional, ready-to-go used car workhorses. And then we have two that are just minor repairs required, just things that I did not have the right screwdrivers for. So, supplies, like fabric and patterns, and initial purchase of the notions would cost about $675. But most of the notions, like the seam reppers and things, we can use from year to year. So that would just be an initial expense. I would like to purchase a couple of higher-quality sewing machines, something more similar to what the students would be using in one of those collegiate-level programs so that the kids who have some prior experience can still gain some more knowledge and some more hands-on experience with something they might experience at the next level. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
How much would the more updated sewing machines be? Do you have a rough estimate?
The estimate was about $1,950 for two machines. They're Berninas, and there's a lady in town that actually fixes the machines so we wouldn't have to ship them out for service, which is nice because my Vikings have to go out for service, and that's a couple of weeks.
Mrs. Farber, I'm just thrilled because probably the machine that you found over there, I probably used to make my very first thing at that middle school many, many, many years ago. But someone who has considered, continued to sew, made baby clothes, made dresses for my kids, made my own prom dress to come to this prom, I'm thrilled. Because as somebody that works in another district and is the secretary, everybody knows I have a sewing kit, and I have sewn people's pants when they're on, when they're off in the stall. It is something that people just don't know how to do anymore. And I'm thrilled because it really, it's a whole-brain process to put it all together and come out with a wearable garment or a curtain or something. And it has saved me many, many. I'm thrilled. So when you get this rolling, you let me know, and I will come to that class and just see what... Because I'm a huge fan of Project Runway anyway, and I think kids need to know basic stuff. They do. This is great. Great. Joanne Fabrous will love you, too.
Yes, they will.
One question, is this already included kind of in the budget for next year so that it's contingent on it? Okay, thanks.
Also, I, as somebody who had to teach themselves to sew, I think it's wonderful that people would actually learn it in school. And also, not just for all the reasons that you stated, but sometimes you know exactly what you want, and you can't find it anywhere. And when you're able to make it, it's not only much less expensive, but it's exactly what you want then. I also, I have a whole bunch of patterns because I bought them when my kids were young, and now they're too old to wear that, and I never ended up using them. So if you can use them, I would be happy to give them to you.
Wonderful. Thank you. That would be fantastic.
It's interesting to be able to hem your own pants. I've never had to pay to hem pants or make an alteration. I've done it myself.
As far as donations, like sewing machines, like one I've got sitting in a closet for the past 20 years, would you guys be willing to take something like that? I mean, working condition?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I'd just add that when you think about college and career readiness skills, this, I think, just, you know, this just fits the bill. So I think we're excited, too, about giving additional students, you know, additional opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice dress, by the way.
I'm sorry?
Nice dress, by the way.
Okay, now I'm going to ask Melissa Edwards to join me. We're going to offer, or we hope to offer, a college prep math course. And this is a course that is derived based on a twofold approach. One, that the administration, at the high school, as well as the math department are trying to move forward and hope to gain your approval with. You know, a few years ago, we recognized that there was a need to create more course offerings to get our students that are seniors to take a fourth year of math, and in some cases, our juniors, to get them to fulfill math credits. And specifically, about 54% of our population heads to a two-year college. And out of that 54%, MCC and FLCC have given us data that says and suggests that about 50% of incoming freshmen require a remedial math course. And we feel specific to that problem at the high school is that there are kids that are not thinking mathematically in their senior year. So we hope to alleviate some of that stress for parents and students for paying for a course in their freshman year where they don't get credit. They go in, and we've actually had students come back to us and say, "I wish I had taken math in my senior year. You guys had talked to us about that." And we have a push for fourth year of science or science in senior year. This course would provide us an opportunity to fill that gap where it comes to math. So I'm excited to have Melissa go through this and share her experiences as an FLCC professor with this particular course in mind.
That data that you got back from the colleges, the 50%, was that specifically Wayne, or was that overall?
They send a specific report to the superintendents every year. And so the last piece of information we received was in the fall sometime. About 50% of our students that attend are in those remedial courses. And we did have a class of 2013 graduate come back and say, "I'm paying for a math course that I'm not getting credit for, and I'm in with 60 students." So that data does go to the superintendents annually from FLCC and MCC.
All right, thank you.
Mike, before we get started, what was the course that Tracy displayed last year? Didn't we approve a math course?
Well, we approved it as a course that could be used for math credit. That's a technology course, but we said we would really scrutinize who wanted to take that for math credit. So it's approved in both science and technology as well as math, similar to accounting. This is just a traditional math course specific to math credits.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, just before you guys, I'd like to address that because I want to make sure that people that are listening and the board itself realizes that. I'd just like to say that from my experience, Wayne is not alone in that, and it's not unusual. Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone realizes that. Most districts whose kids go to MCC, a high percentage, have a similar issue with remedial math and also with ELA, with language arts skills. So I think this is just a great intervention step that I don't know that a lot of other districts are doing. So I'm very interested to hear this report. But I just want to make sure everyone realizes that's not unique to Wayne at all.
Is the remediation at MCC, that's based upon credits taken in high school rather than a test, is it not?
It could be both.
Okay.
It could be both, and that's going to be part of our presentation to address that with our population so that we can step in and remediate prior to leaving us. Our hope is to offer the Accuplacer exam to a specific population in an effort to steer kids and parents towards this fourth-year math option so that they recognize, you know, we're going to try and save you some money upfront, similar to our students who take Gemini courses or AP courses in their senior year that have the ability to choose college credits if they meet the standard when it comes down to the assessment.
So that was going to be my question is, when you're going into 12th grade, you're not exactly thinking, gee, I wish I could take more math classes. So...
Judging by the smiles at the back of the room, that's true. That's a very true statement.
But then, it's sounding like what I'm hearing is these same kids get to college and say, "Oh, my gosh, I wish I'd done that." So how do you get kids to think about that at the beginning of 12th grade instead of halfway through their freshman year?
Well, we're going to try and intervene as early as their sophomore and junior years so that they recognize there's a high probability and a likelihood that they will be destined for a remedial course offering at college if they don't take advantage of some of our offerings. So we've done a great job with offering higher-level courses and college credits. But there's a population of students that, as you say, do not see the benefit of taking math in their senior year. This might get them to think in more of a financial sense, the benefit of taking this course rather than going to an MCC, an FLCC, and paying for it, or a traditional four-year program and being in the same boat, but paying more money for the course and not getting credit for it.
And I would even add to that, because we're having these discussions in my own house right now, is even if you don't take the credit, it's just going to make that transition easier if you already have some knowledge in that subject area, you're taking those first college courses.
Are there any more questions?
So as Mr. Poehl said, I'm Melissa Edwards. I teach here at the high school. It's my sixth year. I currently teach Algebra II Trigonometry Regents Course, Precalc Honors, which is a Gemini course, and also AP Calculus, AB. Some of our course goals are to prepare for college-level algebra and statistics, which algebra and statistics will be part of the second half of the year. Prepare to take the ACT and SAT. So prior to my maternity leave, I started looking at scheduling and how to get kids to advance in their basic fundamental math skills along with trying to prep them to be successful on the SAT and ACT. As Mr. Poehl talked about, the Accuplacer exam, we had talked in conversation about potentially giving that to our sophomores to get a better idea of where they're at. And also those online placement test exams, that's where kids are really faltering right now. They'll come back and say, "Oh, I got put in this placement." Because a lot of kids, after they take Algebra II Trigonometry, the Regents, it's a very intense course, like, "I'm going to take a year off of math instead." And it's probably the worst decision that they can make. So that's where this course is hopefully going to help a lot of those students. Towards the end of the year of this course, I would like to expose them to basic financial math topics such as financing car loans, house payments, loans and stuff, so they get a basic real-world math sense in there as well. And then really just having them take math so that way they don't lose their skills. As I'll go further in depth, some students that are coming back, they just forget what they've learned because they took that year off, which is very detrimental if you're going and you're not super-strong in math. And also give them a fourth credit of math. Some students, as you'll see, like, I have a lot of upper-level students for different classes, and not all of our students are fit, which I'll talk about more in a minute. So we talked about doing a full-year course, the first half being skill-building of algebra and geometry topics without the use of a calculator. All of our courses currently for the Regents and Common Core include a calculator where they really need one to do a lot of the different topics. And students, when they go in to take these college-level placement exams, cannot use a calculator. So you wonder, all of those basic skills, well, can they do it? Sure, they can, but without a calculator, they haven't practiced. So it might take them a little bit longer, and they might not be as successful. So the first half of this course, I really want to strive to get them to use without the calculator so that way it's more similar to those entrance-level exams that they're going to be taking at the college level. And also, like I said earlier, SAT prep to try and prepare those kids. The second half of the year is going to be more based on college algebra, statistics, and basic skills in finance. I have been an adjunct at FLCC for two different courses, one being this basic-level course that you get no credit for. I had 30 students to start the course in, one of them being a former Wayne graduate who was in Precalc, the Gemini course, for the first half of the year and then ended up in the class that didn't count for anything except to try and get them in. So students that are in the Precalculus, they're not really all fit to be in there. But that unfortunately is our fourth-year level math that we offer right now, once they go through. And then we're trying to go to just 12th graders. So students that are either in our general course for Algebra II Trig, or it will be Common Core next year, or students that maybe took the Regents, didn't fare that well, or passed but maybe just barely, and really aren't going to be prepared or ready to take that Precalculus. So those are going to be the students that we're going to try and get to. So the algebra and geometry review will be the start, functions. And then after the first half of the semester will be college-level algebra, some statistics, some basic finance, and logarithms for students to go into. So why is it important? Students aren't being successful. I've had many kids come back, say, "I wish I would have listened to you and taken that fourth-year level of math. I really lost my skills, and I forgot everything that I've learned." I remember, two years ago, I had one student said, "You really are a great math student. You need to take fourth level." No, my mom said, "I want to try and have an easy senior year." And that's probably the worst decision that we can try and go. So offering this fourth level, some students have more choices, is really important. And then the other course that we had last year was Business Math. That still might be a little bit too high-level for some of our lower-level kids as well. So Mr. Poehl also said, when we had our past graduates, I'm not sure if any of you were able to attend, one student that graduated last year is in the remedial course, and she blatantly said, "I wish I would have taken a fourth year." The students are coming back and telling us that now, which, as a math teacher, I could have told you going into it, but they don't always want to listen. So I know the question was, well, how are we going to get those kids to take that course? When, having been an adjunct and knowing you're going to pay a minimum of $400 at a community college-level class for something that you can't even do, it's going to set you back not only to getting your two-year degree, but for a class that you're not going to take. So really pushing that, and that Accuplacer test, I think, is really going to be helpful in telling kids, hey, we're not up to where we need to be. Let's take a look. Or Business Math might not be right, or Precalc. And then just conversations, like I told you before. I think it's very important that we almost say to kids, "You really need to take four years." I know three is mandatory, but as a math teacher and knowing what they need going into college, because I've taught at that level, I'd really like to see us try and push to get that fourth year if their schedule allows it. Questions? Oh, I forgot one thing. I think the only cost that I could see us coming is just getting books. There are some paperback ones. I'm not sure if we could even get some used ones. I have a lot of the stuff that I've done. And then curriculum writing, which we've already started and might be working on more before the end of the year. So just those two. I don't believe any more staff would be needed.
No, we have the current staff. We would use the textbook that FLCC has used. So we'll follow that. We do have the textbook money allotted so that if we do go forward with this course, we have the money for it. Mr. Syracuse has already granted us curriculum-writing money if these proposals go forward. And currently, we have 15 students tentatively signed up. So based on approval, there are 15 already in the course. We've already identified 25 other students that will be going into their senior year who are not signed up for a math option as seniors. And those conversations that Melissa alluded to will be had should everybody approve this course. And we'll at least talk to the parents about the financial aspect of things. Are there any more questions? Thank you. Okay, the last course is actually IB Language and... I'm going to ask Mr. Ryan Van I'm gonna ask Mr. Ryan Van Allen to join me. Ryan is our IB Coordinator at the high school level, he's also a social studies teacher here, and the course proposal that we're making to you tonight is to go from a traditional IB literature class, which we've run for the previous six years, to an IB Language Inlet. And if you take a look at the IB mission statement, I won't read it all, it's specific to what we're trying to do, we're trying to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who can create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. Similar to the Wayne IB philosophy, we're looking to provide our students an opportunity to become committed young people, providing them with an education and emphasis on international perspectives. We hope to expose our students to new ideas and foster the development of their natural curiosity. We feel that this course is a better course than the one we currently offer, for the simple fact that it no longer takes literature and keeps it in isolation, they bring literature and language together, they're really talking about relevant information to today when it comes down to technology, social media, and providing our students with a lens to look through to see if cultural influences or media influence shape the way we think and understand the context that we're reading. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Van Allen to speak to you about why Language Inlet versus the traditional IB Lit class, and talk to you and turn it over for any questions at the end.
Thank you. So before I start, I just wanted to reintroduce myself. My name is Ryan Van Allen, this is my eighth year teaching here at Wayne. I teach two IB courses, History of the Americas and Theory of Knowledge, I also teach economics this year. I've been a baseball coach here for, it's my eighth year for that as well, and honestly, I wanna thank you for approving my appointment to IB Coordinator. It's a challenge that I take on wholeheartedly. It's a program that I believe in, and I believe that we can make it better than it already is. And with that said, I think that this course makes the program, makes the school, makes the community better. So, if you take a look at the first words in each of the bullets on the slide that's in front of you, these are all skills that are taught in all of our classes. They're also taught in our current class, the literature class. I believe that these skills, by adding the different forms of media, this course will be, become not only more accessible to students, but more appealing to students, and most importantly, more relevant to more students. So, it gives the students a chance to challenge themselves, refine these skills, and at a much deeper level than what is traditionally offered in most schools. So, when we put this out to the students and the program, the course offerings, pending board approval, last year's students, there was thirteen percent of last year's class that is taking the current course. When we offered this course to students and really gave them an explanation of what it would look like, that number's jumped, we're at close to thirty percent of incoming juniors are signed up to take this class. My prediction, again pending board approval, that number could increase drastically, especially considering the teachers who are possibly going to be teaching it. They offer a lot to the course. If you look at some of the districts around us that have IB programs, Hilton is one, Churchville as another, they also offer these courses, and they have a huge number, a larger number of students taking the Lang and Lit course over just a literature course. And they cite some of the same reasons that I've given you here today. It is more accessible, it is more relevant. So, we're gonna look just closely, a little bit more closely at the structure of the course. It's a two-year class, junior, senior year. The first part of the course, in junior year, this is the, this is the old one. Okay. Students are gonna be given the opportunity to explore how language develops in a specific cultural context, how it impacts the world, and how language shapes both individual and group identity. Because language is transmitted through a variety of media, students will examine both written and visual texts from books, television, the internet, and also myriad of other sources. The learning outcomes for the first part of Language and Literature are to analyze how audience and purpose affect the structure and content of texts, analyze the impact of language changes, and demonstrate an awareness of how language and meaning are shaped by culture and context. These are skills that we often hear from students who come back, that they are, they value these skills, and so we wanna offer them to more students. The second part of junior year is a focus on language and mass communication. Students consider the way language is used in the media. Mass media includes newspapers, magazines, and the internet. The example, one example is social networking, mobile phones, radio, and film. This section also addresses the issue of how the production and reception of texts is also influenced by the medium through which they are delivered. As a result, students will be able to examine different forms of communication within the media, and understand their purpose, understand why the producer is producing the media the way that they are, what is the message that they're intending. Students oftentimes just take what they see and don't think to ask questions like, why? Why is it being formulated this way? So this part of the course addresses that. The culture part of the course, it really exposes students in a very, very diverse world, and becoming more diverse, even in our own country by the day. So if students can get a greater understanding of where other, why other cultures do what they do, I think it helps us find common ground, to build bridges rather than break things down. The third part of the course, the third and fourth part take place in senior year. This is more literature-based. Meaning in text is shaped by the context of the circumstances of its production, is also shaped by what the reader brings to it. Literary texts are not created in a vacuum, as Mike said, but are influenced by social context, cultural heritage, and historical change. So through close reading of some traditional texts, the students should be able to consider the relationship between literature and the issues at large, some being gender, power, and identity. So the compulsory study of these translated texts encourages students to reflect on their own cultural assumptions, through an examination of work produced in other languages and cultures. So not only looking outward, but we're also asking kids to look inward. Why do we come from? Why do we act the way that we act? Why do we do what we do? And what is similar between what we do and what others do? The final part of senior year is a more in-depth critical study of literature. And again, we're using, close reading is considered to be a core skill, so we use that a lot in many of our classes that include reading. And so it's used here in the understanding and the interpretation of literature. By looking closely at the detail of literary texts, students develop, or hope to develop an awareness of their complexity, the intricacies and the intricacies of their construction. So, in terms of assessments, there's assessments in both junior year and senior year, and these are the official IB assessments. There are other forms of assessing throughout, along the way, to ensure that students are picking up the skills that we're asking them to. But there's, in the, two internal assessments, when I say internal assessment, I mean, these are assessed by our own teachers, and then the grades or marks are sent out to IB. From those samples, there's a core sample, a smaller sample, that is asked by IB to be moderated, and those samples are then taken in their entirety and sent somewhere around the world, and to be moderated, to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing as assessors. So, in terms of internal assessments, we're looking at an individual oral commentary, so students have to get in front of an audience, they have to present their findings, in this case, on an extract from a literary text, and that literary text comes from their senior year, part four of the course. There's also, they also are asked to complete two other oral activities, one's based on part one from junior year, the other is based on part two of the course, also from junior year. The external assessments, these assessments are given here and then sent out, again, somewhere the far reaches of the world to be assessed. And there are three of them, one is a comparative textual analysis, where students write a comparative analysis of one pair of unseen texts. So, the skills that are taught really come into play here when there's, for the first time, taking a look at brand-new texts, and they have to read the text, compare them, and write an essay, or an analysis of that. And then, they'll be asked to write an essay in response to six questions, based on texts from part three, which is the first part of senior year. And finally, students will produce at least four written tasks based on materials in the course and submit two of these tasks for external assessment. And that's the general makeup of the course and the why we'd like to offer it, but again, I'd like to stress the fact that this course is replacing, we'd like it to replace the literature course, because it is so much more relevant to so many more students. And quite honestly, from my perspective, I'm constantly, we as a group are constantly looking for ways to bring more people into this course of study. It is accessible to a greater number than what we have in it currently, and I think that this course will help, help in that endeavor, and that some more students get in there and they say, hey, look, we can do this. It is fun, it is challenging, but we're up for it. So with that said, if there are any questions, I'd be more happy to try to answer them.
I have a couple of questions. The course that you, I understand that this course that's being proposed is a two-year course. The one that you wanna replace, is it also a two-year course?
It is.
And is it possible for kids to take just one year or the other, or you sign up for, you sign up junior year and you're locked in for two years?
Yeah, typically, once they sign up junior year, it's highly encouraged that they stay through their senior year. Otherwise, they're not gonna get the full benefit of the course, and in terms of possibly getting college credit for it, they would need to stay in that course for the full two years in order to carry that to the college level.
But for instance, let's say, and Mr. Pullen may start laughing when I give my example, but let's say I took AP Comp junior year, and then I couldn't get into AP Lit senior year because it wasn't offered, not enough kids signed up. Could I take the second year of this class to get the Lit side?
Well, I don't know that that particular scenario unfolds the way it would be as clean, but we are flip-flopping the way we're offering AP as well, to mimic the same course proposal, so it is gonna mirror Lang and Lit. As far as staying in the particular course, if you stay for the year, yes, you can go into a different option for your fourth year.
Okay.
As far as AP coming in, I don't see why they couldn't, but I don't know specifically as to whether that's something that they would benefit from, based on the assessments from the year before.
Yeah, and I know there are issues with IB credit, but I mean, if you're just doing it purely from a knowledge interest point of view.
Yeah, I would think that that would be fine, but I don't know with certainty. I know in terms of the districts Ryan's compared it to, Hilton as an example, they offer this course primarily for every junior, there's very little when it comes down to other course offerings for juniors. So, that's a piece that we know, and I have to give Jackie Courtney credit, she's been somebody who's been pushing for this course for a few years, brought it back to us, was on fire, saying, we gotta do this, we gotta do this, the times changing, the assessment's changing, and then, you know, with support this year, we finally feel like we're in a place where we can make these changes to this particular course, and tweak the AP program to kinda mimic, to get our numbers up. And as Ryan said, we have fifty-three students already signed up for this course pending board approval, so we're feeling pretty good about the numbers and the approach.
On the Language, the junior year course, you kinda touched on it, but I just wanted to ask, is there, are you working with kids to build skills on differentiating between when somebody is presenting fact and when they're presenting opinion that sounds like fact?
Yeah, I mean, especially when you look at the media and the way that the media is produced, that is a very in-depth analysis into what is the message that the author is giving, and is that in fact a good representation of fact? And if it is, you know, so their intentions do come into play, so I would say, yes, that is one of the key parts to the course, especially the first year.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Ryan. At this point, we're done with our superintendent reports, and we'll turn this back over to you, Ron.
Could we have a show of hands of the seniors who are here, how many of you are taking a fourth year of math? Those who are taking a fourth year of math may come up and have your government papers signed at this time. Seriously, all of you can come up. You are taking a fourth year of math. What are you taking?
I took General Trig last year, so I'm taking A P Trig this year.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Good for you. Are you taking a fourth year of math?
No, but I took AP Physics last year.
Did you? Good for you, Lindsay. Do you like AP Physics?
I could do more.
Really? Oh, so we have some gender inequities, huh?
Enjoy the meeting?
Yeah.
We try to entertain a little bit.
Are you taking a fourth year of math? Are you taking a fourth year of math? Oh, okay. Good luck to you. The next order of business on the board agenda is...
Thank you. Have a good night.
Recommend. Matt, a second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? The second candidate is OJ Saylor, who is from Canadegra. That person is also a current member of the Board of the Wayne Finger Lakes Poses. Can I get a motion to, Tim, a second. Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The third member is Ling Gay, who is from the Bloomfield School District. Can I get a motion to appoint Lynn, or to recommend Lynn? Pam, a second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Then we also have to have a motion to approve the administrative budget. Can I get a motion to that effect? Dennis, a second. Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is the first reading of Policies 5511, Maintenance of Fund Balance, and 5321, Use of District Credit Cards. And this is for our information. Greg, would you like to speak to this, or John?
Greg, I'm gonna ask you to speak to that.
John, I can speak to it from the beginning. So, on the 5321 Use of District Credit Cards, really the only change to that policy was
And the Maintenance of the Fund Balance?
That was a brand-new submission from Bozies, so there, we didn't make any changes to what Bozies had submitted. We had an existing policy 5511, which we renumbered 5512 and kept as is.
Any questions for Karen? Okay, then, let's go to the amendment to the GNA pilot. My understanding is that there is a date that has to be changed in the pilot.
Right, and I think that amendment was made, and we're just looking for that, approval of that date change.
Can I get a motion to approve? Matt, second? Carla? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, consent agenda. The superintendent has recommended approval of a number of items. Can I get a motion to approve? Pam, second? Phil, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Committee reports. Jeremy's not here. Would somebody like to speak? Carla?
This is for the Communication Committee. We had a roundtable interview, or discussion, last week. We had, on the 16th, we had someone from the Wayne County Planning and Assessment. We had both town supervisors of Walworth and Ontario, along with another gentleman who I believe was on the board in Ontario as well. We had, I think, six or seven board members and some very dedicated district personnel, and we had really no one from the community itself. But we did have a very, well, one or, oh, that, okay, I thought he was part of the board. But we did have a very good discussion. It didn't really go what we had planned, because we had planned, obviously, that community members would be there and interested, but we got some feedback about what is going on in each town as far as development that may help to give the district revenue at some point with either businesses coming in, growing, adding, different things like that. So, it was a very, I found it really interesting. It wasn't the way we planned it, but it was still very interesting, and I'm very thankful to the board members who were able to attend that. It was, it was nice. And to the administration who stayed. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Carla? If not, the Audit Committee, Matt?
Yeah, we met April 16th at OE, and prior to the meeting, we held interviews with applicants for the Deputy Internal Claims Auditor position, and we made a recommendation, and that's been forwarded and probably will be announced tomorrow. The Audit Committee also recommends that we add a $25 per non-warrant occurrence to the per diem rate to be paid to the Deputy Internal Claims Auditor, which means if they come in on a call-in and they aren't doing a full warrant, they should be paid something rather than for a full warrant, and that would be the $25. And we also agreed to our schedule for next year, and that will be the Thursday following the board meeting of each month at 5:30 for the 1516 school year, and I have the dates on here. And our next meeting, as we decided, will be September 17th at 5:30, and I would hope it'll be in the District Office Conference Room that will be reopened. And that is it.
We understand that there's been no policy committee meetings that you're done for the year, so no policy committee report. Under Board President Comments, I would like to tell the board that Pam and I recently had the opportunity to attend the Wayne County Business Alliance Breakfast. Bob Duffy was one of the principal speakers. We did have an opportunity during the public portion of the meeting to ask Mr. Duffy if the Rochester Business Alliance had taken a stand on the RSSA agreement between GNA and RG&E. They have not taken a stand. Both GNA and RG&E are members of the Business Alliance, so they have not publicly taken a stand. But in addition to that, we also had an opportunity to talk with him privately, and we also had an opportunity to talk privately with Assemblyman Oaks and with a representative from Congressman Kato's office. So, we are in the process of reaching out to those people concerning RG&E, and we will continue with that endeavor. And with that, we, oh, yes, I almost, thank you. John put out a list of the budget presentations. I think it would probably be helpful to him if he could get a response from the board members as to who can attend what budget presentations. So, do you want, do you want members to email you or to Kathy?
I think if, you just need to email Kathy. And again, it's, we're, you're all welcome, and if some meet your schedule, that'd be great if you're there, and if you can't make it, we understand as well. We just want to make sure that you're aware of what we had going on. We did add a Saturday morning meeting this year to make sure that anyone who may not be available in some of the evening sessions would have an opportunity as well, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Two of the meetings involve dinners with the Ontario Walworth Rotary and with the Lions Club, so if you can attend either of those. With that, we do have a need to go back into executive sessions to finish our work, to do the evaluation of the clerk and the superintendent search. Can I get a motion to go back into executive session? Dennis or Pam, second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. You're welcome to stay. We will be coming back out of the executive session, but I do not anticipate that the board will be taking any further action this evening. Thank you for attending.